Okay, Howard, you can verify that everyone can see the presentation?
Indeed.
Great. So let's, again, I want to start by thanking the board for not only creating this strategic plan back in 2016, but for sticking with it. This was, obviously, a very difficult budget year by any stretch of the imagination. Having the strategic plan in place allowed us as a governance team, as a leadership team, and as a community to stay focused on these three tenants and put together a spending plan that was aligned, aligned, rather, with the strategic plan is helping us to advance teaching and learning and move the organization towards our future focused goals. This budget that was adopted includes and maintains all elementary and middle school teaching positions. It also allows us to add two additional elementary sections as part of the class size management plan. So we're able to advance our class size management plan and keep our class sizes within our targets and our guidelines. It also allows us to continue high school teaching staffing based on course requests. So every year, based on requests, adjustments are made at the high school and has nothing to do with the budget in particular, finances in particular, just other than student course requests. So, and another wonderful part of this budget is the fact that we're able to preserve all of our social workers. Folks will recall that when it came to the district in 2015, we had one social worker, the fact that we're going to have one at each school in K-3 and two at the high school. It is a testament to the board's dedication to ensuring that the social and emotional needs of our children are in the forefront. And especially during a time when this experience that we've gone through is going to cause more folks to have greater need for that support. We're also able to expand upon and continue our current music and art world language and engineering programs. We're going to expand the Chromebook program to include grades three through 12, 1-1, so that in the event, likely event, that we find ourselves in a similar situation in the future, either totally or partially, that we are able to move along as if we are in school, right? More like we're in school face to face. And we're also grateful that we're able to continue our focus on the professional development needs that we've been focused on for the past several years. July 9th absentee ballots. It's a unique situation, right? So, starting today, we're mailing about 18,000 ballots to qualified voters. A qualified voter is someone who is a US citizen, is 18 years of age, and has lived in the district for at least 30 days. So if you are a qualified voter or believe you are a qualified voter and have not received a ballot, please contact Mrs. Gagnon so that we can get you on and you could participate in this process. We usually have 3,000 or 5,000 people voting with 18,000 qualified voters having ballots delivered to their homes. You know, we're anticipating that it could be upwards of 12,000 to 15,000 folks involved in this process. The absentee ballots must be received by 5 o'clock on the 9th in order to be counted. Those ballots can be mailed, but we're also going to have boxes that will be located at the entrances of both the Iroquois, excuse me, the high school and the district office, so that folks who just want to drop them off will be able to do so as well. The gap that we identified on March 9th of approximately $2.7 million was closed through a combination of spending reductions, and we'll walk through those, and an increase, a significant increase in the use of fund balance. However, the tax levy is at the cap, so it's not exceeding the cap, which means only a simple majority of voter support is required. We do anticipate a loss of state aid, so in anticipation of that, we've actively factored in a 10% reduction. We do certainly hope that there'll be some federal stimulus to backfill that. So if there is a greater reduction, mid-year cuts can be avoided. And then, again, I think it's important for everyone to know that we build the budget based on needs and input from stakeholders every year, not just in tough years. Our fiduciary responsibility to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar doesn't end just because we don't have a revenue issue like we do this year. And every year, we build the budget in that same fiscal responsible manner. Great.
Good evening, everyone. As Cosmo mentioned, we have restored all Tier 1 and Tier 2 reductions that were made. So that includes all current elementary art and music positions, all elementary sections in grades three and five at Glencliff and Hillside, and all current school social workers. We've also restored the middle school assistant principal and all middle school teachers. So a section of grade six at VA, which includes the core courses, English, Math, Science, Social Studies, and Reading, a strand of specials at VA, Tech, Facts, Health, Art, Music, and Language, and a section of both core courses and specials in grade seven at Iroquois. We've restored the VA Library Media Specialist to full-time and the Special Education Department for the new special class. At the high school, again, we have restored all Tier 1 and Tier 2 reductions based on student course requests, including Computer Science 1 and 2, Creative Writing, Drama, Shakespeare, the Chinese Language Program. In the Social Studies Department, the Civil Rights Course and Human Geography. In the Business Department, the General Education and Work Experience Program. In Technology, DDP, Manufacturing, Robotics, Electronics, Senior R&amp;D, and Civil Engineering. In Science, Nanoscience, Environmental Science, and Physics. In Art, Advanced Studio, Photography, Film, Animation, Computer Arts. And in Music, Jazz Ensemble, Stage Band, and Orchestra wins for a total of 20.175 full-time equivalents.
However, as I mentioned, we did have to reduce spending in order to help close the gap. And unfortunately, two vital, vital positions are being eliminated from this budget, temporarily anyways, because these positions will have to be reinstated at some point. The work in the HR office and the PPS office doesn't stop. And we will pick that up. We have folks in each office to help us out. But the goal will be eventually to get back to having fully staffed HR and PPS offices. In the meantime, the support staff and the leadership team will make up the difference and try to ensure that we can carry out those tasks with fidelity. There are a number of positions that were unfilled during the 1920 school year, either partially or the entire year. Those positions we're going to leave unfilled. Most of those will put a little bit of pressure on both the business office and the O&amp;M staff, but we feel as if we can watch the storm for a few years. A couple of positions also are not being filled due to attrition. One in particular is the high school, one of the high school counseling positions. One, another reduction that was made had to do with the high school teacher leaders. It was a wildly successful program. The Teacher Leader Program in the high school was so successful that I wanted to expand it. Unfortunately, we're going to have to pause for a few years before we can be in a position where we can reinstate the Teacher Leader Positions and then expand it, not only from the high school, but also into the other buildings. And the sectioning decisions that were made around math PE and business, as I referenced earlier, are the decisions that are made every year based on course selection. So there are a total of 16.3 FTE reductions.
Kaz, before you go off the page, can you just identify the actual bodies, people that are being cut? Like, we know that we're losing the HR Director and the PPS Director. Again, tremendous losses there. Is that next line clerical assistant, supervisory clerical assistant, are those people as well? Or are these people we're losing through attrition, for example?
Some are through attrition and some have never been filled. So, for example, the transportation, the environment tech rather, is being eliminated, but there's a position in the organization for that person, right? The payroll clerk is vacant. We're just not going to fill it. There's a CA position that we're losing through attrition. Same with the EA as well.
How about the transportation utility worker and the grounds worker?
Grounds worker and transportation utility worker are positions that have not been filled.
Have not been filled. Okay.
Well, the grounds worker is going to end up in somebody getting bumped out of position.
Yes.
Yeah, the transportation utility is currently vacant, but the grounds worker is going to result in somebody losing their position. But we do have another position within O&amp;M that the person has a choice of taking, but it's not the same position that they can.
Yeah, I was going to say the environment tech.
Okay, all right. That's, that's good to hear. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in addition to FTE reductions that we have in this budget, we also have some non-FTE reductions in the budget. And we really, when we're crafting the budget, do try to look to reduce this side of the budget before the FTE side. So we look to do non-FTE reductions before we reduce any FTE. But you can see here, the BOSI's category, we've reduced just under $400,000 from there. Contractual, which includes our tuitions for outside placements, $675,000. Equipment materials and supplies, over half a million dollars there. Transfers, we have a transfer in our budget, which is traditionally been $100,000 to support the School Lunch Fund. We've reduced that transfer by $25,000. Non-FTE personnel, this is still salaries that we pay, but not necessarily linked to an FTE. So things such as overtime and substitute costs, there's a reduction there of $157,000. And other items such as insurance, $13,000. So the total non-personnel reductions is just under $1.8 million. When we look at the proposed budget compared to the current year, you can see that the salaries and benefits, which is the largest part of our budget, is going from $62 to $65 million, so up $3 million over the current year. Equipment, books, and materials, there's a reduction here of over $200,000. Contractual items, again, including our tuitions, are going up, $374,000 compared to the current year. BOSI's is up as well, $172,000. And then other items, which is debt service and transfers primarily, is going down, $28,000. But again, that includes that $25,000 transfer from the School Lunch Fund is making up the majority of that difference. So proposed budget for next year is just under $90.8 million and is a $3.3 million increase from the current year. Looking at the budget, three-part budget, we broke it down to program, administrative, and capital. Program is our instructional and transportation budgets, so it's going from $62 million to $65 million. The administrative budget, which is at $8 million this year, is going down to $7.9 million, a decrease in that area. And capital, which is our debt service and our O&amp;M department, there's a slight increase there of just about $50,000. So you can see the program part of our budget is just under 73%. The administrative, 8.8% and capital, 18.7%. On the revenue side, the first column here, looking at it from 1920 to 2021, is state aid. And here's where we accounted for the 10% reduction in foundation aid. So it's going down $800,000. Again, we don't know what our final state aid is going to be, and we won't know until January because of the look-back periods in terms of the state revenue picture. In addition, we also don't know if that's going to be backfilled with any federal stimulus number, federal stimulus money. But we're planning right now for an $800,000 decrease in that line. The federal sources are staying the same at $250,000. Other local revenues, there's a small decrease there due to interest earnings and some differences in rent. The property tax levy is going from $58.3 million to $59.6 million, so it's a $1.2 million increase. And this, again, is at the 2.15%, which is at our tax cap limit. Pilots, we have the same pilots going into next year. There's a slight increase there, but that's due to just an anticipated increase in the tax rate. Applied fund balance in 1920, the current year, we've applied about $1.5 million to offset the tax levy. Going into next year's proposed budget, we're at 4.19, almost $4.2 million, so a $2.6 million increase in the appropriated fund balance. In addition to appropriating additional fund balance, we also earmarked some reserves to help offset the budget of $390,000. And our inter-fund transfer, which is a transfer from the debt service fund, is going from $213,000 to $100,000, a $113,000 decrease there. You can see the overall proposed budget of revenue for next year is a $90.8 million, which is the same as the expense side, an increase of $3.3 million.
So the big question now is what happens if the budget is defeated, right? So because we're going out at the cap, we require a simple majority of the voters for approval. Unlike if we were going to exceed the cap, we would need a supermajority. So, under usual circumstances, we vote on the 3rd Tuesday in May, and if the budget is not approved, the board has a couple of decisions to make. It can revise the budget that was defeated, or it can go right back out with the same budget and try it one more time on the 3rd Tuesday in June. And if that second vote is defeated, then the districts must adopt a contingent budget, which among other things means that you cannot increase the tax levy. But right now, we don't know if there will be a second vote. We have no information. So we have to assume, one of the several dozen assumptions that have gone into this budget process, that if the budget's defeated on June 9th, that we'll have to adopt a contingent budget. Now, as I said, one of the things about a contingent budget means that you can't increase the tax levy. So we were, we were given permission by the taxpayers to levy a tax of $58.4 million for the current year. The budget we're proposing, if approved, would allow us to levy a tax at $59.6 million. So you can see there's a $1.2 million delta that would have to be made up if we were forced to go to a contingent budget. And that's about the equivalent of 16 positions, which unfortunately means that we are now going, we would then have to return to having conversations about prioritizing those Tier 1 and Tier 2 reductions in workforce that we had discussed throughout March, April, and the early part of this month. However, only not being able to increase the tax levy is only one component of having a contingent budget. You know, you're under pretty strict rules, able to operate and maintain the buildings and preserve the property and ensure the health and safety of students. But it's not business as usual by any stretch of the imagination. Spending in certain categories isn't allowed. Most equipment is not permitted in the contingent budget. Certain supplies for students in particular are not permitted in a contingent budget. Only employees who are part of a collective bargaining unit can have increases in their salaries. All other employees, and there are several in this unit, would not have access to the salary increases. And then basically, community use of facilities comes to a halt. Now, it's possible that there may be some community organizations that can pay for every penny of the expense of using the facilities. Just very unlikely that there will be many, if any, because in a contingent budget, we are not allowed to use a single cent of taxpayer dollars to offset the costs of community use of school facilities. So what, you know, inevitably happens in most cases in a contingent budget is there's virtually no use of the facilities by the community organizations. However, if the budget is approved on June 9th, at the levy limit of 2.15%, there will be an adjustment in folks' tax bills. So we wanted to give people a projected increase, right? So, you know, we base these increases on two things, the property value, right, of 250, 350, and 500. But it's also contingent on what town you live in as well. So these are a thumb, rule of thumb estimates, just to give folks an idea of what their property tax bill would be. So if the budget is successful, annually, people who live at a property that is between 250 and 500,000 will see an increase on annual basis between $105 and $210. And then monthly, that would convert to between $9 and $18 a month. So obviously, if you have a property that's valued under 250 your monthly, your average monthly bill would increase less than nine. And if you're above $500,000, your monthly average increase would be greater than 18. But we want to make sure that folks have an idea of what they are committing to when they cast their vote. In addition to casting a vote about the budget, we also ask once again, as we do every year, for a bus purchase proposition, under a million dollars. We have a good plan in place to make sure that we can, you know, catch retiring debt, the same way we try to catch retiring debt in capital projects, and maintain a safe and efficient fleet, just the same way we want to maintain safe and efficient buildings. It's the exact same concept. And this year, we are at the playing cards for trading in and purchasing eight, 72-passenger buses. We will receive a little bit of trade-in to offset that purchase, and we will receive about 67% in transit in subsequent years to offset the cost of those purchases as well. In addition to the budget decision and the bus proposition decision, we have a Board of Education election. And as Howard mentioned, we don't have four candidates who are running. We have three now. Tim Brennan, Sarah Rogerson, and Jennifer Zhao are vying for the expiring seats of Rosemarie Perez-Jakeless and Jennifer Zhao, whose both of those terms expire on the 30th of June. So you will see four candidates on the ballots because they were already presented before one of our candidates withdrew. But then we'll make sure that we communicate that through our communications office, so people are aware of it. It's important, once again, to distinguish between the capital project and the operating budget. All the debt service that's associated with the 2021 operating budget are from capital projects that have been approved years ago. Those projects have been completed. We are just paying the bill for that. All the debt service for those associated with the, and any impact that we would have for the capital project that we will be asking the voters to weigh in on in December, will have any impact on the 2021, 21, 22, 22, 23. It will be at least the 23, 24 school year before the capital project that we're going to go on in December has an impact. But we must have, the same way we have a plan for replacing buses, is the same plan we have for maintaining our facilities that allow us to keep our facilities in good shape and actually make some very much-needed improvements while keeping our debt levels stable.
So over the last five years, we have developed our social, emotional, and academic programs to reflect the priorities from the strategic plan, the priorities from our program reviews, and to reflect student needs. And this budget allows that work to continue. Past investments include implementing the K-5 class size management plans, increasing social-emotional support across the district through the counseling and social work departments, including professional learning for teachers and the leadership team, increased support for English language learners, the implementation of a high school alternative education program for at-risk students, and strengthening our special education continuum. We've increased instructional technology supports and enhanced our safety protocols, implemented a tiered response to intervention plan to support individual academic progress in K-5 reading, added extracurricular and athletic opportunities, and increased support for student athletes, developed the fine arts program, and implemented professional learning curriculum development, and have been able to be thoughtful in our planning thanks to our program reviews. So we know that there will be a need to assess and address gaps in student learning due to the closure. We've been working with our middle and high school team to provide options for credit recovery, including virtual summer school, and using technology to provide personalized online learning support. For K-5, we're looking to collaborate with schools across the region to provide virtual K-5 thematic learning materials for families through a summer enrichment website. We hope to have these materials available mid-June. And this is learning that gets students moving outside, away from their computer screen, things like Science in My Own Backyard and Cooking Time, among other resources. We will also be able to offer a virtual summer school for our students with disabilities. We know that supporting student, family, and staff mental health will be especially important as we plan for next year. And that starts now with how we close up the school year in a thoughtful manner. And we're thinking about the enhancements that are possible to our instructional program, whether we have a live, traditional instructional program next year, a blended virtual live program, or a fully virtual program, when every student in grades three through 12 has access to a district device. So that could mean improving our program across all three models. And we know that we'll need to do all of this while following social distance protocols and new cleaning guidelines. As we think about the future, we do so with a commitment to all of our students in learning environments that are personalized to meet their needs and that cultivate the unique gifts of every student. This means providing multiple pathways for students that prepare them for college and the world of work, and a program that balances their mental health needs, their social, emotional, and academic development.
So we move forward as a future-focused community embracing compassion, connections, and civility, knowing that we're all going to have to be flexible as we shift our thinking going forward. Life as we know it in many aspects ended on the 13th of March when we all went home. Although some of those and many of those aspects of public education will remain, several others will have to change. And we all, as adults, realize that we're in different places and need varying levels of support as we move through these shifts that are going to need to take place. So focusing on compassion, making sure that we are connected with one another, making sure that we stay connected with our children and their families in the height of civility, so that we can learn from the mistakes that we're going to encounter, which are fine, by the way. That's how we all learn, by making mistakes, and in taking comfort in the fact that we are not going through this alone. We will work very closely with our regional school district partners, but also with our school district partners across the state, the nation. And quite honestly, public education across the globe is going to change as a result of this pandemic. And what we do know more than anything else is that as difficult as this is on adults, we, as a community, do not focus on adult issues. We're all about students. So we will make sure that our children come to school in whatever capacity, and that we guarantee that they have a joyful, caring experience that they will carry with them for the rest of their lives as they go on to solve the problems that they're going to be confronted with going forward. And we believe that the budget, that Board of Education has put forward, is going to be able to advance our future-focused tenants. And maybe not as quickly as we otherwise would have chosen, but certainly we are going to be able to move the organization ever so slowly closer to that future-focused vision that we have. So with that, are there any clarifying questions that need to be answered by the board?
I think, thank you, Kaz, and Marie, and Carrie, for all the work you've done, both, and we've said this before and we will continue to say and mean it, for handling the issues right now, as well as always looking down the line as well. These decisions do matter to that. So thanks, guys. And I look forward to more of the public presentations. All right. So next we can, the next item three is some first policy reviews for the folks to read. And then at this point, I think we can ask for a motion to adjourn.
There being no further business, move that the Board of Education adjourn at 6:50.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, Jay, did you have something to discuss? All in favor? Okay, Jane, did you have something to discuss? No? Okay. All in favor? Any against? Seven zero. We must end the meeting.
Good night, folks. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Much.
Thank you.